Wait on anybody?
You.
Can you guys hear me with this mic? I don't know if mine's real loud.
Can't hear it?
What'd you say?
Can't hear you.
Just checking.
Got that.
Trying to wake y'all up. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and start, we're gonna start off with the Seminole Airport Authority. Can we have a roll call please, Jay?
Chris Anson?
Here.
Trace Connor?
Here.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Eddie Foreman?
Here.
John Kramer?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Corey Crabtree?
Here.
Dana Miller? Jeff Griffin. We have a quorum.
Consideration in action of consent agenda. Move. Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Alright, with no items removed from the consent agenda, do we have any appearances or petitions from the audience? For the Seminole Airport Authority? Having done all that, accept a motion for adjournment.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, last time? Motion passed. Moving on to the Seminole Gas Authority. We have a roll call please, Jay.
Larry Church?
Here.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Corey Crabtree?
Here.
Dana Miller?
Here.
Trace Connor?
Here.
John Kramer?
Here.
Chris Anson?
Here.
Eddie Foreman?
Here.
Jeff Griffin. We have a quorum.
Consideration in action of consent agenda. Move to approve. Second. Roll call please, Jay.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, with no items removed from the consent agenda. Do we have any appearances or petitions for, from the audience, for Seminole Gas Authority? Alright, moving on, we'll accept the motion for adjournment.
No move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, last time? Alright, moving on. Moving on to the Seminole Municipal Authority. Can we have a roll call please, Jay?
Eddie Foreman?
Here.
Corey Crabtree?
Here.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Dana Miller?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Chris Anson?
Here.
John Kramer?
Here.
Trace Connor?
Here.
Jeff Griffin. We have a quorum.
Right, consideration in action of consent agenda. Move. Second. Get that, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, with no items removed from the consent agenda, consent agenda. Do we have any appearances or petitions from the audience, for the Seminole Municipal Authority? Alright. And we are going to recess this meeting. Do we need to take a vote on that?
Well, we won't open it. We just wanna open it to just, uh, just recess the entire meeting and not open it.
But do we need to vote on the recess?
Yes, just do it, Bob.
Alright. I just wanna put these two together and do this with the other, exact the session begin, so we don't come in and out of these meetings and clear the room, so. We'll need a motion to recess. No move.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to the Seminole City Council. We have a roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Corey Crabtree?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Trace Connor?
Here.
Chris Anson?
Here.
Eddie Foreman?
Here.
Dana Miller?
Here.
John Kramer?
Here.
Jeff Griffin. We have a quorum.
Alright, if you will, please stand and do the pledge of allegiance, and Chris Anson will lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we thank you for the city of Seminole and all those who call it home. We ask that you bless our discussions tonight, and, uh... We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Alright. Alright, consideration in action of consent agenda. Move to approve. Second. Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Here.
Trace Connor?
Here.
There, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Chris Anson?
Looking for him.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, with no items removed from the consent agenda, we have a petition from the audience to speak, and that is Tara Geist, if you wanna go ahead and come up?
Okay, um, thank you guys for having us tonight. So I'm Tara Geist, and I'm here representing the Boomtown Committee. So it's been a little while since we came and given you an update, so we just wanted to give you an update, some of the events that have happened in the last few months since we met. Um, so our three local banks, so First United, Security State, and Bank First, all have donated twenty-five thousand dollars to our project. Um, that was... That was a pretty cool thing. Um, they kinda did it on their own, and they all three went together and collaborated, and so we got seventy-five thousand from them. Um, the Boom, we also had our Boomtown Christmas Tree Auction. This is our second year. And it was twice as big as it was last year. We made about four, or twenty-four thousand dollars off of it in about two and a half hours. Last year we did twelve thousand in about forty-five minutes. So this year we had quite a bit more things to auction off. Um, it was kinda neat, we had local bakers donate items to serve the community. We also had Roma's, as well as, uh, Hogs Barbecue that donated foods. We were able to beat everyone. It was a pretty cool event. We figured we had about a hundred people there that came. Uh, so that was pretty neat. Uh, right now, we're in the middle of kicking off our Friends of the Playground and our Partners in Play. So Friends of the Playground, get your name on our website, and on our social media, as well as on, um, like the local newspaper. So it's running, anybody that donates two-hundred-and-fifty dollars up to two-hundred, or to twenty-four hundred dollars, gets you on there, and if you become a Partner in Play, that gets you two-hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars. And it's all the way up to, like, our big people that have donated twenty or twenty-five thousand apiece. Uh, we've also had several local member, like family members and organizations donate. We've had a ton of, like, um, a ton of, just in this last week, we've had a ton of Partners in Play and Friends of the Playground come on. So those are kind of the new things we're doing to try to continue to raise money for the new playground. So we just wanted to give you a quick update. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all your hard work.
Good.
Alright, that was all we have for the audience. Moving on to approvals and acceptances, bids and purchasing. Consideration in action, consideration and possible action to approve the, is that Omea, is that how you say that? Omea-based bid of six-hundred-and-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eleven cents from Game Time for the replacement and installation of Phase One of the Boomtown Playground with initial payment of three-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety dollars for the materials due no later than fourteen weeks after the order is placed. The city has committed four-hundred-thousand dollars to the overall project via its fiscal year 2023 to 2024 capital improvement project budget. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item two, consideration and possible action to approve the Omea-based bid of ninety-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and ten cents from Game Time for the replacement of sun shades at the softball complex to be funded from insurance proceeds received for the May 2022 tornado damage. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item three, consideration and possible action to approve the Omea-based bid of sixty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty dollars from Game Time for the replacement of sun shade at the splash pad to be funded from insurance proceeds received from the May 2022 tornado damages. I have a question real quick before we go on this. Are we getting enough to do these? Are we having to put in any extra?
It's all covered.
Just curious.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes, sir.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item four, consideration and possible action to approve the demolition of Boomtown Playground to make space for new placement of playground equipment.
Does the city gotta do the demolition?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Um, have we determined if any of the playground, um, equipment that's out there now is salvageable, that could maybe be put in another, uh, city park?
I had that question.
Question. If it is salvageable, we will salvage it, yes. Uh, I've not heard any discussion from any stretch or any of the park crews about pieces that might be, certainly not the slides, uh, they're pretty much done, they're splintering. Uh, perhaps a swing or two. I can't think of anything else that might be usable, maybe some of the handle bars going over.
Wood, I would think it's probably gonna disintegrate or come apart when you take it apart, would be my guess, but there is some stuff I think you can reuse, so.
We'll, we'll analyze it and shoot you an email. Yep.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions?
Well, I think in the, uh, in part of the demolition, they were wanting to allow people to remove their pickets if they had paid for pickets during that park bill. I don't have a problem with that. Uh, I know my wife wants to go get the ones for our kids. And, uh, but I think we should probably set some type of time limit on that, as to when they, you know, you need to have them taken down by, so there's no confusion as when it's demolished and they're gone, but they can't, you know, they can't, we're not gonna go find them. So, when do we plan to start, uh, demoing it? Do we have a date?
That's precisely why it's on the agenda. You guys tell us. It's gonna be fourteen weeks from tomorrow morning when we order the equipment. Now that you've given us a permission, uh, what we'd like to have is a, a window, perhaps have it, have the last day to claim any pickets on, you name it. It's either December fifteenth, maybe. And then give us a window, depending on weather, we may not be able to start on December fifteenth, but if we show up on December sixteenth, we're gonna, I mean, it's gonna come down quickly, obviously. So what I'd like to have is just a, a drop dead date for claiming, and then a window for us to do the demolition. It's only gonna take, I think, I think Game Time said about two weeks for them to prep the ground before they install. So, uh, I'm, we're gonna, we're thinking twelve weeks, a, a minimum of twelve weeks, uh, from tomorrow will be the start date for the new construction. And we've gotta have at least probably two weeks to do our demo, so, um... We, we probably need to have it down by January the fifteenth for sure. And, uh, so as long as you give us two weeks before then, I think we should be fine pending weather. So it might be backing it up into December, uh, to be more comfortable for us to have it all down by the time the construction crews show up.
You got a suggestion?
I wanna make sure we get the word out to people, if we can get that on the city's Facebook page or put right away. I don't wanna cut you guys short of doing it, so if you think December fifteenth, that gives them a month from today, or tomorrow to...
Perfect.
To do it.
One month. Come get your pickets if you want them. We, we won't have staff there to unscrew it, so.
I mean, if we're gonna lose a lot of pickets, is there any reason we need to, I mean, those are there, I don't know how much safety they provide, but do we need to close the park once the pickets start coming down? I, I think a lot of them are already broken from what I gather.
Yeah, I, I can't think of a reason why we would close the park while, and all we're offering, let's, let's be clear. The only thing you're allowed to remove from the parks are the pickets with your family name on them, alright? So the swings, the, the wood planks that are in some parts of the, uh, park are not to be touched. It's only the pickets. Uh, but I can't think of a reason why we would need that taken down, or to close the park for only if we're removing the pickets. You know? Go ahead, man. Something you said kinda rang a bell. You said only the pickets with family on them. That, I think that needs to be clear because...
With, with your name or your child's name, your family name.
People see that and say, oh, I'm gonna go get pickets 'cause I'm gonna build a doghouse or something. So I think that needs to really be highlighted. I'm sorry, Dan. Cause I've thought about it myself. There we are.
Could we do something where we just, like, if you're interested in it, request it, and then y'all put it in a repository, then you can come pick it up, and then, you know?
How many are there?
Have a bunch of people messing with it, or?
Two-hundred.
Two-hundred-ish.
I mean, people kinda probably know where their pickets are, if they're interested in going to get them, they could probably just, I think that we just let them go get them themselves.
Fair enough.
Hopefully, hopefully that doesn't provide an issue, but, I mean...
Sharon, we probably need Matty to do a press release on that. Okay, so wait, December fifteenth, is that your request?
Yes.
You guys call it that?
Need a motion.
Okay. In the motion that we said?
Cause that'll be the day that we close the park.
So we just wanna add on to this one, just also, any pickets with names on them need to be removed by December fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna make that part of the motion, okay?
Okay. It's with me, I'll make that up.
Okay. Chris. Roll call please, Jay.
I'm sorry, it's Chris, and who else?
Chris and, uh, Eddie.
Eddie.
Thank you. Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, so making sure you guys all got the addendum to this, but we're moving on to item five, one of the addendums. Consideration and possible action to approve the sum of one dollar for the sale of surplus real property building at the corner of Timmons and Mike Snyder to Stuart McDaniel or Goober's to, to be used as a staging and storage area for renovations of the old high school.
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion to the president.
Okay, so, uh, just to refresh your memory, we did declare the surplus on the church on Timmons Street, which is directly across from the old high school, on, uh, May thirteenth, twenty twenty. And then we accepted bids for that building on July ninth, twenty twenty, and we received no bids. And we've been trying to find people that might take it since then. Uh, we've had no interest at this point. Clearly, the demolition cost would be extreme, in our opinion. And unfortunately, we'd be losing a, a pretty nice building, and, and there's no reason for that, but no one's really taken charge and said, hey, we'll do it, until Stuart McDaniel showed up. Uh, Stuart, I think, uh, you guys probably are aware, if you're not, um, Stuart has acquired the old high school and is, is doing a renovation on it. He's, uh, set his intentions on the Van Sanford apartment, which we'll hear in just a second, but, um, and he wants to utilize the church as a staging center, and we can't think of a better use, certainly not at this point, and it, it, uh, gets it out from under us and into private hands, which it always seems to do better there anyway, so. Uh, I, the staff would advocate that we go ahead and sell the building for one dollar.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item six, consideration and possible action to approve the state share repayment fund agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, ODEMHS, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and twenty-two cents, representing an overpayment of state share funds in two thousand and eighteen. A non-budgeted item to be funded through Fund Ninety-two Special Projects Grants.
So we got more money than we were supposed to?
Yes.
And we're giving it back?
Unfortunately, we, we held it as long as we can. We didn't know what it was for. Uh, we did deposit it, and, and we, we actually asked them, what, what was this for, and never got an answer, so we held it until now. Someone picked up on it and sent us a refund notice, so.
I'm just glad we still had it and didn't lose it.
Say, what's the statute of limitations on that?
Yeah, I thought about...
Sound like my ex-wife.
Is it just us or other places? As far as we know, it's just us.
Can we add that in the motion about the statute of limitations? Don't we check that?
Yeah, that is great. Good job.
Do you have a motion from anyone?
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes, sir.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, moving on to item seven, this is another one that was added. This one makes me excited. Consideration and possible action regarding demolition of the Van Sanford apartment. Stuart began to present a case to delay further action pending his renovation plan. Sir, if you'd like to go ahead and...
Please don't tear my building down. I've put a lot of money into it so far.
You wanna go to the mic right there? That way we can all hear you.
You're on TV.
Oh.
Smile.
Stuart McDaniel, uh, husband to Katie Arnold, uh, what, what'd she say? She's a Seminole, uh, most school spirit, so she bought the high school. It was kinda funny, the person interviewing her said, what's it like to own the high school? She's bought for a second time. I mean, cause I owned this place when I was here. So I'm, uh, originally from Tulsa, and, um, and what we do in Tulsa, and I have Luke here with me, which, he's my witness, he came up and saw some of the work that we've done. We buy old buildings that are in significant distress and, uh, oftentimes ready for demolition, in some cases begging for demolition, and, um... We have about three hundred properties in the Tulsa area. Uh, if you're familiar with North Tulsa, it's a economically suppressed and disadvantaged community. We live there and, uh, have renovated seventy-six homes and, uh, four quad complexes and a little over dozen commercial buildings, warehouses and things. So this is our bailiff, this is what we do, and I'm, I was kicking myself when the Van Sanford went up for auction, and I didn't know about it, and then somebody bought it that decided not to do anything additionally, and then we heard that it was being torn down. I'm like, oh dear God, this has to stop, and, um, the building, um... It has a lot of significance to the town that you may or may not know about. It is the first permanent lodging after the Seminole oil boom. So before Seminole was really a, a town of, of, you know, beautiful brick buildings and a main street. Uh, people were living in tents, sleeping in, buying a movie ticket so they could take a nap in the theater, uh, while they were working the oil fields, and the Sanford's moved their per, their family home from the corner of Seminole and, uh, what is now Footmills, which was First Street, to the house next door, got moved over, and so they could build this world-class apartment building, and it was something very fancy in its day. Uh, all the apartments were wired for telephone, um, it had nooks in each unit for your toaster. Um, it was, it was something very fancy with jazz plaster. That was in the ads, jazz plaster, which all I look at is like, oh dear God, I have to put that back. But it is a historically significant structure. It was in part of the nineteen eighty-six Historic Survey of Oklahoma. It was identified as a historically eligible property. Um, and what that means is it is eligible for historic status and subsequently tax credits, which translates to a forty percent, uh, tax credit on the cost of the building. We expect to spend about a million and a half on the rehab. It's gonna be fully gutted down to the studs, all new electrical plumbing, mechanical, new roof, flat roof. It will not have that metal roof ever again. So a tornado will probably not damage it next time. Um, it will have restored wood windows. It will look and feel like the nineteen twenty-nine original from the public spaces, but from the interior of the units, it will have all the modern amenities of full-size refrigerators and, uh, regular-sized stoves and things that people come to expect in an apartment. We are also anticipating, uh, keeping the eight units on the first floor, converting the eight units upstairs to two two-bedrooms and two three-bedrooms, which will better, uh, it's a more appropriate mix for, to the times of what Seminole needs today. We don't necessarily need sixteen studio-in-ones. We, a little, a blend would be a safer bet, and we'd fill it up a little safer. Uh, but otherwise, it'll still look like a beautiful historic building. The parapet walls used to be two foot taller with some decorative trim and little, little triangles on them. Uh, it was a beautiful building in its day, and it will be beautiful again, so I appreciate the patience, and I appreciate the consideration. If you've seen it on Facebook, we got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of likes and people sharing it and reposting it, and then when the video of the high school went up, it, we had thirty-five thousand views of the high school video, and so there's a lot of love for this town out there. It's just, we, we've gotta take care of our home, so the city needs to, you know, rebuild itself, so. Losing a building like that, and I know you were at your wits' end, and rightfully so, but we do have a responsible owner now, and Luke has made haste, if you've watched, I don't know how a building could look so much better plywooded up, but it does. In the grass mode, um, but give us a little patience, and I know you're gonna want a timeline, and that's something we're working through. The historic tax credits is a very slow, cumbersome federal process. It requires the state shippo, which is what the State Historic Preservation Office to approve, then it ships it off to, um, the federal, uh, the National Park Service through the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, it, it takes months to get a word back from these people, so what our plan is, is to get it secure, get it cleaned out, get their architectural done, get with the city for mechanical plumbing, the fire, work out all the kings of how we're gonna put this thing back together. We're gonna do a rift patch on the part of the rift that was damaged the most, so we can keep it dry in the meantime. And it will continue to get mowed, continue to stay secure, and it, what I consider presentable comparative to what it looked like just a few weeks ago, until we can get that secured. I hope to come back or send Sharon an update before the next city council to share with you a more realistic timeline. I don't have all those dates in my head, and I'm still talking with all of those people, so, yes, if you can defer the demolition of our building, that would be great, as we are actively working on it, and you're cleaning it right now. We're getting all the trash and debris out, uh, in the next few days. So more questions, is, of anything, if you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. That's great information, man. It just makes me happy. Could you do one thing? Uh, I hope this passes, but that's my opinion. If it's gonna be a, you know, a little time span, could you like make a nice sign that was up there that said, this is what we're doing, and, you know, advertise yourself to say, hey, they're doing something about it, you know? They're just not sitting out doing anything.
Yeah, we...
You understand that?
Absolutely, yes, all above. Um, what we usually do is come up with some kitschy little marketing thing, that something historic is here and coming back, and, you know, just some fun to announce it, and... Um, I know it's, it's become an embarrassment to the town to drive in on your main street and have this to explain. I hope now that it's not nearly such an eyesore, and then yes, if we have a sign out there that says something, you know, something is being done, something great is coming, I think that will...
Yes.
You know, sell, uh, go a long ways on returning the reputation of the town that you're taking care of. care of.
And it looks a lot better, so thank you.
You're welcome. I'm happy to see.
I was going to say the same thing. I'm a Sonic Fanatic, so I'm probably there two times a day, but I see that thing every time I go. But you are right, it's hard to believe that plywood on windows made such a big difference in that building, but it really did. And the roof coming off, and then I guess you guys are working on the.
Cleaning it down.
Carport or whatever it is now. So I don't think you could have hired a better person to do that.
No, I have nothing bad to say. He's been.
Many of my projects and what I'm doing, so extremely honest person is going to tell you, if you ask him how long it's going to take, he's probably going to give you the best guess he can do. But he's a great guy. But I'm excited to see it coming back because I do this myself, just about one a year, I guess is what I'm down to now. It's really fun and I sympathize with you because when you tear out a house or tear out a building, you just don't know what you're getting into. If you keep going, that's awesome. So I've had to do that on the last one and it was rough, but it paid off. But thank you for doing that because I consider doing that myself, but I don't have the means to do it, but I'm glad someone is.
But some of the properties I'd love to show you in Tulsa, you would scratch your head. It's a very different environment up there. The red tape, I will have to say, your city is amazing. They're actually like, how can we help you? Tulsa's, how can we make your life miserable? And make you cry somehow in the process. But in Tulsa, the zoning prohibits so many of these older structures from existing that people like me play the grandfather game. And so we identify properties that are in distress and in likely demolition, but they're duplexes on single-family zoning, or they're a triplex in a single-family neighborhood. And it's so counterintuitive, cities like, we need more affordable housing, but we don't want to make duplexes legal. Like, okay. So we save those and they're grandfathered in, so they can't tell me no. I love going into city meetings and they can't say no. But that's where I live in Tulsa. Here, it's much more welcoming and I'm grateful for that because the building's going to need a lot of love and a lot of money. So I need all the help I can get.
What's the plans for the high school? Can we discuss that just real briefly?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. I can talk to you later.
Okay, thank you.
It's not in the agenda.
Okay, okay.
I'd love to hear about it.
Yes.
Stu, you might introduce Luke and give a little bit of his background and then also talk about the two structures that are associated with the.
Yeah, I'll talk about those real quick and then I'll let Luke introduce himself. And he, so we first acquired the building from, he shall not be named, that bought it and did nothing. And then we were able to work with Mr. Colclaser to purchase the two houses next door. We then tore down, what was that address? 102 St. 104 was demolished. We went in structurally, it was just not viable. The little house next door, which happened to be the Van Sanford, the Sanford family home, is actually in excellent condition structurally. It's got a lot of historic features. It's put a little love into it. That's an amazing little house. And it's a good thing because historically it's significant, the structure. Because Ms. Van, the lady Sanford, wanted a big brick mansion where the building is. And she did not get her brick mansion. She, her little house got moved back so they could build the apartment building for the town because it was more important to give the town the apartments than her mansion. And she says so very vividly in a couple newspaper ads in the producer back in '29. She wasn't happy but not happy about that. So that house plays a significant role in the history of the building, so I'm glad we're able to save it because it's deemed a supporting structure by the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm like, oh, great, I'm happy I own it because that would have been problematic had we not.
It sat on the corner, the one on the corner?
Behind it. The one right behind it. It used to sit on the corner in '28.
Okay.
And it got moved in order to build the building. Which is why they're so awkwardly close together. So.
I used to throw paper there.
Yeah. And then, yeah, Luke Martin.
Throw the paper. From the old newspaper.
So I'm Luke Martin. Some of you may know us. We own, run a construction company, RGB3, that's done quite a bit of work for the city and for surrounding cities. So we actually, I guess, won the bid to demo the Van Sanford and in the process got introduced to Stu and went up to Tulsa and checked out what he had going on and are happy to be working with him renovating instead. So we turned it around the other way.
Turn inside out.
So we do both. We've got multiple properties here in town and in Shawnee and Locust. Don't mind fixing them as well as tearing them down.
Thank you.
You have any questions specifically to the Van Sanford?
Hi, God, I just want to say thank you for investing in the city, but specifically Ward One. A lot of historical buildings here that, I know I was supposed to talk about the high school, but the art deco style is amazing and I would love for you to, once you're done with this, maybe take a look at some of our buildings in the downtown area that could use some love. So thank you for investing.
Let me get through this one first. Yeah, help me through it.
Thank you for investing in us.
Absolutely. When I first met my wife and I came to Seminole, had never been here before, she took me through her hometown and showed it off. I love little towns, so she knew, like, I was not the big city boy looking down. I was like, oh, this is so cool. I love these old buildings, I love what you can do with them. Then she showed me the high school and she's like, and it's not being used. And I'm like, this is beautiful. I mean, this is a stunning building. And so that's what triggered the whole concept of investing in Seminole and the fact that you all need housing and your population increases exponentially by day than night, which is showing that you're not a bedroom community, you're a working community. So there's a need for housing here to retain those citizens and those tax dollars and tax base to build back the city. So it's kind of like, it's a good scenario if we just save some of these buildings from the wrecking ball. So thank you for delaying it a little bit and hopefully delaying it a little bit longer so we can get this thing back in shipshape. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Do you recommend a suspension of the demolition for a period of time until you can come back? Or how would you?
Well, I would like to have it suspended as long as humanly possible. A project like this is likely going to take a year, year and a half. I'm not going to lie to you. It's a long process to get the tax credits, to get the banks on board, sell the credits. From today to completion, we're looking at a year or two, probably maximum a year and a half. I plan to put a full timeline together after I get back with shippo, the State Historic Preservation Office, and they can give me a clear nomination timeline because the project does not pencil if I don't get the historic tax credits. It's eligible, they've said, they've given the blessing that it's eligible, but it does not pencil unless we get that 40% tax credit. So without that, the project just sits there, you know, trying to keep it secure until we get that credit.
What's the percent of not getting that and this thing falling through?
The likelihood of not getting, it's almost 100% guaranteed we're going to get it.
Okay.
Because they nominate, they, let me say this correctly. They established it as eligible in 1986 without being asked to do so. They surveyed the state and small towns, identified important structures to town history, and they stated that Van Sanford, due to its first permanent lodging status, was eligible. So it's 100%. Now, it's a lot of rigmarole of me having to document more and more and more, but there's no, there's not a chance pending it getting severely damaged again, there's not a chance that it will not get accepted. Like, I can say that with fact because they've already preliminarily determined it as being eligible.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Were you ever interested in that building before the tornado or anything?
Actually, weirdly enough, yes. One of the problems with historic tax credits is the large, it takes such a large project to get an investor interested in buying the federal side of the credit, part of it's state, part of it's fed. And the high school is just big enough to not get the most money. It's like, big enough to be a credit but not big enough to get the 87 cents on the dollar that they buy the credit for. Van Sanford's too small to get like a big amount of that money. The two of them together push us over 1.5 million in credits. So when I initially started talking to high school, I told my wife, I'm like, do you think the guy that owns Van Sanford would sell it? Because I think that would be eligible. We could pair it with the high school, bolster the credit, and it would help us secure a higher paying federal buyer, right? And then we never talked about it again. And then it got hit by the tornado and she's like, you probably should call. And I'm like, yeah, yeah, we'll figure it out. And then the day after the auction, we were visiting family in Shawnee, drove through Seminole just to take a look at things, and there's the sign. And it was auctioned the day before. And I'm like, so anyway, my mistake, you probably wouldn't be in this meeting, but I would have been against and hopefully won it and we would have already dealt with a lot of this and we would have been a little hurt, head in the curve. But nevertheless, maybe not what God had in store. So here we are.
That's right.
And we'll see what happens.
Amen. Amen.
Stu, how long till we could have some plan?
I'm interested, if I may send Sharon, or if I need to bring it to the meeting, I can, but I can send before the next city council meeting, I plan to have a preliminary timeline so that you at least know what the credit period is. And we're already starting the cleanup this Friday. The architect's coming to start doing as-built. We'd like to meet with city in the coming weeks with those as-built drawings to see what the reconfiguration involves with fire code. We're going to start these background work immediately, so it's not going to just sit idle. We would like to have shovel ready, I'm going to formally shovel ready when that credit gets approved. I don't want to be sitting there then, okay, now it's time to submit the architectural drawings. We'd like to have all that permitted and ready before we actually get approved.
To give you a little context, I'm trying to get, to form a motion that they can make on the delay. So I hear Tim saying, you know, we need something to say, all right, 90 days, we'll review this again. Or help us formulate something that they can take action on.
The state meeting is toward the end of March. That is the state meeting. I should have a lot of information before then, like preliminary approvals and like, yes, we're going to submit it, but we haven't, we can't meet and officially approve it. They only meet four times a year. March is their next meeting. The last meeting was in October. So I was just, but March is the next one. So if I may have the, till the end of March, with the requirement of a timeline being submitted by next council meeting, that would be phenomenal.
Six months would be May, right? Is that right?
Is it four months?
Okay, I'm getting a head nod from the police chief. You think we got it secure enough the last four months?
About six months.
I think it's secure. I don't think it needs to happen.
We'll keep an eye on it. We'll keep an eye on it.
At least got guys keeping eyes on it.
Six months fine for me if y'all, that's good if y'all, you know, we don't want to pressure you, man. You're going a mile for us and we're here for you.
And I'm an hour and a half away.
Least me.
Let me, let me do this as much. As I can. But Luke's your guy, he's going to be the GC of the project. And I'll tell you, Luke's the one that did it, that walked through it and said something to the effect of, it's a shame this thing's got good bones. And when I heard that, I'm like, I need to meet this guy. He sounds just as silly as me. So we need to, we need to get together and he's been phenomenal. His crews have been fast and efficient. So, yeah, six months would be fantastic. And we can report back a preliminary timeline to Sharon if that's acceptable, but before next council.
So you'd have some sort of plan with the layout, custom architects and bids or whatever? Is that what your plan is to?
That, not by next council, that by maybe the following.
Yeah, 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 no, that's fine. I just mean, within that six months, you would have all that worked out, plans and everything.
Yeah. We're likely to have a floor plan, schematics within 16 to 90 days from now.
So let us know, we'll work you out.
Awesome.
I don't have a problem with it. Just need a motion from someone to delay it.
Right there. I'll second it.
Did you get that, Jake?
What is the motion? Six or four?
The motion is to delay destruction on the building for at least six months until we go report back on progress on its renovation.
Do we need to put an actual date and not at least six? Just want to do May 1st? Is that good enough?
So May 1st?
You okay with that?
Right.
And we'll just have an understanding you're going to be submitting interim things.
We'll be in a lot of discussions between now and then.
Roger that.
What is that date?
2nd Tuesday in May.
I know that.
Standby.
May 14th. 14th. All right. Got it? You got your motion? Did you second it? Okay, so we'll do a roll call, please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes, sir.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to remarks and inquiries of mayor and council members. Not the mayor, but I'll go first. But Stu, I'm pretty excited about that. I want to see that kind of fruition. I want to walk through that when it's done and be pretty proud of that. I always thought it'd be nice to have one of those urban-type apartment fields and it's not changing the structure either, but it'd be really cool, you know, once you're done, I think it'd be nice.
Yeah, hurry because I'm 70 and I'd like to live there so I don't have any grass.
Oh, you're going to see it.
Y'all's kind of get into gear, would you, little please?
We've got a handicap rail plan.
There you go.
Something else, the Arts Council, of course, did another mural on the back of Candy Hammond's agency, I believe, over there on Broadway. So if you guys haven't seen that, it's pretty cool. That took a lot of work because I don't know if you guys do much painting or not, but with the lines in that building, that would have drove me crazy. But it looks really good, so if you guys haven't seen it, go see it. Doing the plug for the Arts Council, but I like it.
Yeah, Arts Council.
All right, moving on to Ward One, Larry Church.
I don't have anything really to offer, except I really, really am always amazed at the work that people do for the city of Seminole. And remember the mentally ill. Thank you.
Dana Miller.
So I'd like to remind everybody that November is Native American Heritage Month and I know, I can't remember, so I might need you to remind me, did we do a proclamation this year? Did we?
Yeah, I think we did.
We almost always do, I don't recall.
Yeah, I think we did.
Okay, all right.
If not, we need to.
And so just one constituent issue that came up just, I believe, yesterday. We had a constituent bring to our attention a trail that is kind of just a man-made trail going from South University, kind of over the railroad tracks and kind of closer into town. So what we understood was that a few people use that to walk, to work, and instead of having to come out onto the highway and walk into town, they use that trail. And so it kind of got us thinking a little bit about some opportunities in that area to kind of, you know, connect for those folks who live in that area to an easier access into town. So perhaps clearing out that trail, I know there's an issue with it because it goes over the tracks, you know, you're talking about public or private property at that point. But, you know, just to keep that in mind, that those issues still exist, you know, access to town for some folks in that area. There are some opportunities. There's a thing called Rails to Trails that the old railroad companies either donate or sell their property back and you can use it for trails around your town. So just some things to keep in mind for that. So I will hopefully be visiting, revisiting that later. And the Veterans Parade, that was downtown. From all the pictures I'd seen, it was pretty, pretty successful. So it's always great to see just a lot of life being put back into downtown and really excited about the renovations and saving our old buildings. I appreciate it. I love old buildings and I think it's great. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before we move on, one more thing. The apartment complex that I helped a guy from Oklahoma City Watch over here, we had a plumbing issue and to come to find out when they pipe burst it, they didn't connect the pipes back where the plumbing.
And that was an issue?
And I was like, they called me and they were like, what's going on? I'm like, I don't know.
Oh, man, it's fine.
But however, I did get it all right and he fixed that immediately, so kudos to him. But however, I did get a hold of Ryan and he fixed that immediately, so kudos to him. He's always on cue, so if you need something, call him, he'll get it done, so.
That's right. Forgot one more thing, sorry. My family and I hosted a pet food drive at Walmart this weekend on Saturday and nearly collected so close to a ton of pet food that will, that is donated to the animal shelter. And I just want to say a real quick thank you to Chief Withers and his officers who helped us unload, you know, like, we just showed up and just had very little notice and helped us unload a ton of, nearly a ton of food and are storing it temporarily for us. So thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Awesome.
Ward 2, John Kramer. Eddie Foreman. All right, Mr. Tim Poplin.
I really don't have a lot, but, you know, Baker's not here tonight, but it's been a long time since I've ever heard of any kind of injury with our, you know, our workers. And they have been doing some really, yeah, yeah, it's knock on wood, but they have been doing some big-time projects. I mean, when you dig a 20-foot manhole and you got to get down in there, they've got the safety boxes, you know, and it's just great that we're able to give him that safety equipment and that's why the safety record that we have. But I know those guys appreciate it, but I want them to know that we appreciate them, too.
Good call.
And that's pretty much it. And Ernie, thank you all, you and your wife for getting all that headed up and the guys, yes. God bless y'all, keep after it. Thank you.
Ward 4, Chris Anson. Trace?
Just want to say thank you again to Stuart, Daniel and Tara and, of course, Will's is back there. Things are coming together and it's going to be beautiful here, so that's about all I got.
All right, city manager, your turn.
Yeah, just, just going to echo what Tim had to say. Nothing moves a city more than motivated mamas. And what Tara Geist and her whole clan have done is remarkable. And if I may, I'd just like to give them a round of applause. All the Boomtown Committee, thank you for what you've done. And on behalf of our K-9 officer, we want to thank you for the ton of dog food that was delivered to...
He's got a buffet now.
Hey, the Lions Club has done, and our Parks Department, has done another fantastic job of getting the Snowman Wonderland ready. The plan is to fire that off at 6:30 next Thursday, right? This Thursday, okay. I stand corrected, it is this Thursday, so that the families that are coming home to Seminole can enjoy the Snowman Wonderland, so we'll fire that up at 6:30. There's usually a quick ceremony before we fire it up at 6:30 and maybe a Christmas carol or two. So we'll ask Ernie to lead that. He can't carry a tune, but we're going to ask him anyway. Congratulations to the Seminole State College Soccer Team. They were, unfortunately, even though they won today, they were eliminated by a playoff calculation, so... But, man, anytime you can make it to the national competition and do well even there, that's fantastic. And we're seeing that program grow and grow. Congratulations to Dan Hill and his crew. Be careful going down Milton Phillips especially. As you are probably aware, it is, deer season is upon us and we've had multiple reports of deer crossing there near Brahms. And not a lot we can do about that, but, boy, be careful. At 50 miles an hour, they can hit you just as easily as you can hit them, and they will. They do some damage. Oiler Park, we've done most of all the demolition that we planned to do. So we're still in discussions with Seminole State College over what to do with the Hitting Facility, also known as the Lloyd Simmons Center. We don't quite know what's going to end up there, but we're going to develop a plan pretty quick. Last night, the Planning Commission approved the construction of the new world headquarters for Oklahoma Custom Coating. And Sam Adkison, if you've driven down Bourne Boulevard recently, you've seen the dirt moving there at the top of the hill near the Oklahoma Custom Coating site. They're going to build, do you remember the square footage? About 4,000, 4,500 structure there. The intention is that he will also eventually expand some of the operations, the actual physical machining of the equipment in another building behind that. But 40 new jobs, exciting times, really good stuff. I sent a new agreement out this evening, just before this meeting, for the new homes to go on the old independent tank site. Some of you may remember it more as the USA Tank Site. That's about 14 acres that will hold 33 homes eventually. And we're partnered up with the National Guard and hopefully get them to, when they come to a drill, we're going to ask them to demolish the two buildings there at the roundabout. And so in the meantime, I think he's going to try to start on the south end. It will include a street. And it's actually platted as Elm Street already. Back in the 30s, it was platted as Elm Street. It's never been an Elm Street, but it's just kind of a cattle trail through there.
That's a true.
But his plan is to bring in 33 new homes. These will be single-family homes for sale. And we couldn't be more excited about the housing boom that's going on in Seminole right now. The Blackburn Ridge, they're obviously making big progress and that's going to bring 79 more units as well, so good times, really good times. Bus station has been cleared. I think we gave them a certificate of occupancy. I think they're training staff and buying inventory. We don't have an exact opening date, but some of the Facebook traffic seems promising that we'll have that open anytime soon. Family Entertainment Center, I think I may have given you an update last month, but right now we are set very close to getting a request for proposal for the operator. And so one of the things that I'll probably have on the agenda next month is some sort of discussion about how you want to approach the operations of your new Family Entertainment Center. We were able to go and visit Hayday in Norman. Hayday is a very similar venue to what we're talking about. They have a cool bowling alley, a fantastic restaurant, they've got laser tag and a big arcade. And, man, they were so gracious to us. It was remarkable at the detail that they were able to give us about profitability of arcades versus, you know, bowling or laser tag. It really opened our eyes and that's when we figured out, you know what? We probably need to have the operator talking while we design this so we don't design something that can't function. So the architect is getting that put together and we'll have that on your next agenda to get a little more in-depth about that, so. Veterans Day Parade, you already mentioned, but the flyover that these guys did, that was super neat. It just kind of made the hair on the back of your neck stand up. And then the parade was about double the size that I was expecting. It was really well done, lots of cool entries in that. Waste Water Plant, we are submitted on the Waste Water Plant to the Department of Environmental Quality. We're expecting an answer back from them any day, which that'll set up the bidding process. So once the DEQ puts their stamp on it, we'll be going out for bid. I can tell you that the engineer has already given us forewarning that we're going to have sticker shock. The 20 million, the $21 million that we were expecting is not realistic in this environment, so. I have asked, I have asked and received a meeting with Director Corn of the USDA Rural Development, and we're going to be talking about the fact that we were not given any grant money in the initial allocation. And the fact that, hey, now, we're going to have to talk about grant money to finish this. So we're going to be meeting with them very soon and I appreciate USDA's involvement. Town Center's going fantastic. If you've driven out there, you've seen some of the sheathing going on outside of the hotel. That tells me that they're relatively close to bricking it or rocking it. And once that gets on, they're going to be dried in for the winter and hopefully sometime by next summer, we'll see some new hotel rooms coming in and be able to keep some of our high school and college tournament teams in Seminole on their tourism dollars. Okay, and then I'll include something on the next agenda for the old high school so we can talk that through, if that's all right. Stuart, if you don't mind coming back, or we might be able to zoom you in or team meetings. Okay, all right. We'd love to see her. Round here, you're known as Katie's husband, so, all right. That's all I have, thank you.
She did good.
All right, city attorney. All right. Well, we have an executive session, too, so you can motion to go into executive session.
Come on.
Second. Do a roll call on there, just all in favor.